Welcome to the Monday, September 24th, 2012 Valley View School District Board Meeting. Mr. Vinagas, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Actually, you know what? Wait a minute. Why don't we have the young Mr. Kwan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance since he's going to be honored this evening? Step forward to the microphone, young man.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board of Affirmation Statements. Mr. Curran, I think we were at Miss Hansen last time, so we'll move your way back down.
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college, an successful life, academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful, effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments, with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. Moving down the agenda. Dr. Mitchum, consent agenda items.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in seconded. Mr. Curran and Ms. Hansen. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Consent agenda items. Mr. Mitchum.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the Board to approve consent agenda items 5-1 through 5-6, Board Meeting Minutes, Executive Session Meeting Minutes, Gifts for Jimmy McGee, Oakview and Woodview Elementary Schools, as well as Jane Adams Middle School, Student Activity Contracts for BHS and Five-Star Sports Calendar, Report on Shared Services or Outsourcing, and Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefits Report.
Motion would be in order.
Move.
Second.
Motion in seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Mitchum. Student and Staff Recognition Pillars of Valley View.
First to the podium is Laura Noon from John LuKansik Middle School.
Principal Rolerson?
Oh, I mean Trish Rolerson, I'm sorry. Scoff in LuKansik.
Same building.
Good evening, President Quigley, Members of the Board, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership, and our Valley View community. It is my pleasure to stand before you this evening to recognize Joan Noonan, our school counselor, as a Valley View pillar. Her beliefs in our students, parents, staff, and community are at the core of each and everything that she does. Mrs. Noonan is the type of person that is up for any challenge that comes her way and will do whatever it takes to guarantee success for our students. She is committed to going the extra mile to ensure that all students receive the level of support that they need. Over the summer, she organized home visits to students' homes who she wanted to make sure got started on a positive note this school year. She also had other dedicated staff members that jumped on board with her to attend the home visits as well. On a regular basis, Mrs. Noonan connects with our families and provides them with viable resources, and she works collaboratively with many different entities in the community. She is always excited to support multiple interns each year as a means to give back to her profession. Mrs. Noonan is also leading the way with incorporating different ways in which to expose not only our students but also our parents to college and career readiness. LuKansik would just not be the same without her dedication, her energy, and her unwavering support she gives to our students, parents, and staff each and every day. Thank you, Mrs. Noonan, for all that you do.
Next, we have from Pioneer Elementary School, Principal Carmen Killingsworth.
Good evening, President Quigley, Valley View School Board, Staff, Administration, and especially our Valley View community. My name is Carmen Killingsworth and the principal at Pioneer Elementary School, and this evening we are proud to introduce our pillar. Her name is Jenny Swerdlick, and now I will turn the microphone over to Mr. Mitchum. He's going to read the reasons why she's our pillar.
Thank you, Ms. Killingsworth, and good evening, everyone. Please join us in congratulating Ms. Jenny Swerdlick, our school's social worker, for being nominated as our pillar of Valley View. Jenny has been very supportive to all students and staff here at Pioneer. Jenny cares about the well-being of students, and she puts their needs above all else. She helps our staff brainstorm ideas to support students in the classroom. Our students feel safe when speaking with her about issues that matter in their lives. She connects with them on a level that helps our students do their best in our learning environment despite temporary or ongoing adverse circumstances in their lives. As our committed social worker, Ms. Swerdlick works tirelessly behind the scenes to be a resource for our students, families, and staff in crisis. Her knowledge and professional expertise are instrumental as we help our students and staff keep our focus on learning while dealing with obstacles, both big and small. On a more personal note, she's also my social worker. I go to her often, and she is able to assist with staff all the time as well, so I thank you for that, and congratulations.
Good job. He's going to announce it for us. Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership, Community Members. It is my pleasure to recognize Kelly Janelle as a pillar of Valley View School District. She's a team leader and a team player. She's willing to help colleagues and students whether in her content area, department, or not. She's been a contributor, contributing member to the Math Department at Bolingbrook High School for over four years. Kelly is a technology coach at Bolingbrook High School. She presented at the 2012 Valley View School District Summer Institute. On behalf of the Board of Education, and Bolingbrook High School recognizes Kelly Janelle as a pillar of Valley View School District.
Mr. Daniel Kwan will be being presented by Major Mark Placey of the ROTC Marine Corps from RHS.
Good evening, President Quigley, Vice President Goojus, Members of the Board, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership, Members of the Audience, and Members of the Community. It is with great pleasure that I introduce our new Senior Marine Corps Instructor, Major Mark Placey, who will introduce Cadet Kwan.
President Quigley, Vice President Goojus, distinguished members of the Valley View School District Board of Education, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership, Members of the Audience, and the Valley View School District at Large. It gives me great pleasure to join you this evening as we honor Cadet Daniel Kwan, presenting him with the Marine Corps Junior Officer Training Corps Legion of Valor Award Bronze Cross. Daniel's accomplishment represents the end result of individual Marine officers reviewing the records of over 30,000 Marine Corps JROTC candidates in six regions at over 200 schools worldwide. Finalist packages are then forwarded to the Marine Corps JROTC Headquarters in Quantico, Virginia, for final consideration and Board selection. Cadet Kwan's impressive resume includes a 3.8 cumulative GPA, membership in the National Honor Society, service in the Romeoville High School Students Council, and interscholastic varsity competition in both cross-country and track. As Director of Marine Corps JROTC, Dr. William McHenry states in his letter to Cadet Kwan, "Your selection to receive this prestigious award is a tribute to your effort and recognizes the exceptional level of leadership and scholastic achievement you have attained. As a 2012 recipient of Region Four at Large, you join an elite group of young leaders. This award reflects great credit upon Cadet Kwan, his family, Romeoville High School, and the Valley View School District at Large." Distinguished members, ladies and gentlemen, I'd ask that you please rise as we honor Cadet Kwan by reading his Legion of Valor Citation and presenting him with his well-deserved award.
Legion of Valor of the United States of America, to all who shall see these presents greeting, this is to certify that Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Daniel A. Kwan has been awarded the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross for outstanding achievement in the Reserve Officer Training Corps Program, given under my hand on this day, the first day of August in the year
Ladies and gentlemen, Cadet Daniel Kwan.
And for the audience out there, those that don't know, Mr. Kwan was also recently voted Romeoville High School Homecoming King, so he also has that on.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Kwan. Listen on reports, any and all, please. None? Moving down the agenda, Audience Participation. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to the Board this evening? Please keep your comments to four minutes or less. Thank you.
Hello, I have a question about the budget. Is it now or later?
Later.
Okay.
Just a couple of minutes later, don't walk far. Action Reports, if there's no other public comments, Action Reports, Student Due Process Cases, Superintendent Dr. Mitchum.
I ask that the Board approve these items as presented.
Motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Motion in seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Action Item 9.2. Dr. Mitchum.
I will defer to our District Lawyer, Jeff Alpern.
Thank you. Mr. President, this is a motion, this is a motion to update the Board policy with respect to, to waive first reading and update the Board policy with respect to the administering of medications. And what's been updated, in short, is you clarify, we now clarify in here when a student is authorized under Illinois law to fill out their own authorization form. We recognize when, under Illinois law, a student may self-administer EpiPens, diabetes medication, and asthma. These are all relatively recent legislative changes that were enacted. We implement procedures with respect to the EpiPens, and we increase some of the legal protections for the district. Now, there's one thing I would like to ask the Board, and that is for someone to make a motion to amend the final paragraph on the indemnity language to match the language that we have in the second-to-last paragraph on immunity. That was a typographical error on my part, so.
I will make a motion to amend the Board policy language in the final paragraph on indemnity to match the language in the paragraph immediately preceding on immunity.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the amendment as presented?
How many motions we have on the?
We have one motion right now, and that is to amend the ordinance as presented, the policy as presented, then we'll vote on the policy. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Now, we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion in seconded. Is there any discussion at this point?
Yes. Why do we motion in second? You didn't even finish before he said so moved. So, what do we vote now?
We are now voting on the amended version of the waiving of the first reading of the amended Board Policy 7.270 of administering medications to students, which will keep us in compliance with state law and Illinois State Board of Education compliance, correct?
Correct.
Rather than have to do it twice, we're just doing it now.
Correct.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I just want you to keep it simple so that I, as well as everybody who's viewing it on the audience, knows exactly what we're doing and what we're voting on.
Gotcha.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
9.3. Mr. Alpern, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the Board Policy, or the, excuse me, on the agenda, it's to waive the first reading and pass the amendment to the Student Discipline Board Policy. This, again, is just to keep, to update the language, to keep it current in law, and also to match the policy language with procedures that are actually here in place in Valley View.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Campbell, second by Mr. Goojus. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Number 10, Ms. Smith or Ms. Kinder?
No report this evening. No report as well.
Thank you, ladies. Mr. Grzafi, you're always a wealth of fun and information.
Thank you, President.
Tonight, more so than others.
At this time, we need to convene a public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2012-13.
Motion would be in order to convene the public hearing for the purpose of the budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. We stand in public hearing. Mr. Grzafi, please present your facts and figures.
Very good. For those of you that may not know me, my name is Gary Grzafi. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services here in the Valley View School District. Tonight, we're going to be presenting the 2012-13 budget formally to the community and the Board. Our total budget for 12-13 is $274 million. Within that budget includes all of our debt service and capital projects. There's a $27.5 million TRS on-behalf payment that's included in that budget. That figure is important for a couple of reasons. One, it does inflate our budget by that amount of money, and even though the money does not flow through our hands, it's a book entry only that is required by state regulations to be accounted for, and it represents the pension payments that are either made or not made, as the case might be, by the state of Illinois on behalf of teachers within our district. From an operational standpoint, we stand at $243.7 million. That represents an increase of $17.2 million from FY12. Within that $17.2 is a $13.5 million budget for the build-out and of our additions and renovations to implement full-day kindergarten for the new school year. Our staff count stands at 2,506 positions, and you can see how they're broken down between certified and classified. That's a net difference of just under eight positions less than we stood in FY12, and they're listed there accordingly. The major changes since the budget's been put on display back in August, corporate personal property replacement tax has been reduced by $1.3 million to reflect an actual estimate. At the time the budget was put on display, those figures were unavailable. I think I made mention of it because literally the day that we presented it was the day that those figures were released by the Department of Revenue. Title I and Title II revenue and expenses are added to the budget in the amount of $3.3 million. There's no net change there. Again, we have $3.3 million coming in as revenue, and we have a commensurate dollar figure of expenses added as well, and so, again, those are, they don't offset anything that was built into the budget. Those were just late in coming in terms of the final budget amounts. We do have an additional allocation for textbooks and materials, $435,000, as was necessary to purchase materials. Health insurance savings were added to reflect plan design changes per our tentative labor agreements, $263,000 incorporated into the budget since put on display again. And we did our recap, if you will, of our site and construction fund to account for where we think the budget will actually close on the all-day kindergarten project. Initially, we thought it'd be closer to $15 million, but between successfully completing the project, about 99 percent, other than punch list items, that project, I'm happy to say, will come in about a million and a half less than what we thought it would be, so that's good news. Our object summary comparison is something I present to you annually, and it compares how we ended last year, actual, to what the budget is for this year. We give you a percentage of salary benefits, purchased services, supplies, capital outlay, and any other objects for all funds at the top, as well as the Education Fund, which is our largest, our largest fund. And so, you can see there, there's our $274 million that incorporate all of the various objects, and if you look right here, you'll see that salary and benefits comprise over 70 percent of our budget is wrapped up in salary and benefits. Just a graphical representation there. Where does the money come from to operate our school district? If we include that on-behalf payment that I mentioned earlier, the state kicks in about 25 percent, or $63 million, to operate our school district. As you heard me mention earlier, that money actually never comes to us in the form of a revenue, and so, I like to back that out, and when we do back that out, we go from $63 million to $36 million. And so, the state provides about $16 million of funding to the school district in the area of education and transportation. The educational revenues from the state comprise of general state aid, about $18 million. I'll have a slide here in a minute, as well as special education reimbursement for mandated programs. The federal government kicks in $13 million, primarily in the area of Medicaid outreach and Title I and Title II funding, and the vast majority of our funding comes to us via local revenue sources, primarily in the area of property taxes, corporate personal property replacement tax, and user fees. And so, again, we have about a $253 million revenue stream, $226 million, if you back out that, $27.5 million. Again, just breaking it down locally, as I mentioned, I won't read this to you, the state funding, general state aid yields about $1,060 per student, or $18.7 million, and you'll see in the next chart, we're $1.7 million less this year than we were last year, or almost $100 a student less coming in the form of general state aid. That was due primarily to the state prorating general state aid at the 89 percentile level. This is the second year in a row they've prorated general state aid, coupled with the lack of an increase in the foundation level. Again, we're getting hit pretty hard in the area of general state aid, which is probably our second-largest revenue source behind property taxes.
I don't want to interrupt you, just for clarification purposes, there's a belief that we get $6,000 per student per year in state aid, in general state aid. That is, if you're the poorest district in the poorest corner of the state of Illinois. We get now $1,060, which is down from $1,500 three years ago, four years ago?
That sounds about right, yeah. Last year, we were at $1,150, $1,160.
And herein lies the issue of the state balancing its budget on the backs of local governments. This has been going on far too long, but that is the, that's the crux. We've, I mean, I joked with Gary a couple of years ago, I said, "I thought we got, you know, kind of said, I thought we were supposed to get $6,000 a year," and we both laughed, knowing that that's not the case. He said, "If I got half of $6,000, this would never be an issue." But that's not the case, because, and we're getting lost because we're a large suburban district.
The formula takes into account, yes, property wealth and various factors, and, again, with the idea of not increasing the foundation level to match what's going on in terms of the cost of living increases, along with the proration, it really, it takes us down to that $1,060 level, which is a far cry from the 6119 that the poorer districts would receive in full, so.
Thank you. I just, I'm sorry, I needed to bring, I didn't want to have to come back to it.
And so, again, I'm just outlining here the general state aid proration, transportation reimbursement continues to be maintained at a reduced formula from '29-'2010 to the $1.2 million, the corporate personal property replacement tax, or CPPRT. And so, those three revenue sources have decreased in this budget year alone by $4.2 million. And I can't stress enough that one of the difficult things that government entities struggle with is the fact that they control very little of their revenue sources. There's not a lot I can do with what's going on there on the revenue side. One of the few things we can control is the expense side, and we'll talk about that in just a second. This just gives you a graphical representation of what the state aid decreases look like over time. You can see that in 2007, 2008, 2008, 2009, we were actually increasing a bit, and then the gradual decline that mirrors kind of the issues that are going on in Springfield. This just gives you the actual dollar values, and you can see there at the bottom, a five-year loss of general state funding of $8.8 million over the last five years, which is quite a difference from the '06-'07, '07-'08 years, where we were actually realizing a $1.5 to $2.2 million increase year over year, which certainly went a long way to helping us maintain services and a balanced budget. So, again, a very, very dramatic change over these last five years. The state continues to be behind in mandated categoricals. As of August, we were the $4.3 million behind. I think it was yesterday, actually, it was today, that we received that final quarter. So, the state is actually caught up, if I can make that statement, with state funding to the district until September 30th. So, for the next six days, the state is caught up with its funding, and then on September 30th, they'll be another quarter behind, so.
Then we'll be another 90 days back, right?
Exactly. So, we budgeted 25 percent collection in FY12 and 75 percent of the collections in '13. We remain, again, one quarter behind, which represents lost investment opportunities, lack of sufficient cash flow, and certainly budget uncertainty, not knowing what prorations might occur. might occur in 2014 and beyond. And so as we try to forecast what our finances, financial health will look like three, four, or five years out, again, we have to make some assumptions based on what's going on in the past, and again, these last two years have been anything but certain. State transportation, an area that we've talked about many times up here before. We've taken a $1.2 million hit the last four years, not to mention the fact that they've owed us the one categorical in the amount of $1,700,000. So the four-year total lost and owed, $6.5 million that when we close our books, that's the deficiency, if you will, in the transportation fund each year of the last four, or for the four-year total, $6.5 million. This is a report that we provide to the board every month with the financials in terms of what grants and state funding are owed to us on a monthly basis. And so I just put this in there for the community so they can see what areas are, we're behind in terms of having our collections up to date. Our estimated year-end fund balances. This is a chart that I like to provide to the board, certainly it'd be part of our website posting. And so we start the year with just under $90 million in our operational funds, which are comprised of our education fund, our operations and maintenance fund, which is where we pay for operations of our buildings and our transportation, our grounds. Transportation fund is pretty self-explanatory, our busing, our IMRF and FICA, where we pay all of the costs associated with the classified pension, as well as social security and Medicare costs. Our TORT fund covers the liability, general insurance, and workers' compensation, insurance coverages for the district, and our working cash fund, which is the fund that allows us to meet payroll obligations because of the way our funding happens basically twice a year with our property tax collections. So again, we started with $90 million. We've got an expenditure plan of $204 million in revenue, broken down across the various funds. $230 million is going out the door, and part of that is the $13.5 million right here for the all-day kindergarten. So that's going to leave us with a balance of $63 million estimated at the end of June 2013. And that's a $26 million spending plan dipping into our reserves, if you will. As I mentioned, we've got about $13.5 million in all-day kindergarten that's coming out of there, and that leaves us with a pretty good-sized operational deficit. As I presented the budget in August, I told you that we're going to cut that in half for next year based on the assumptions we put into the model, based on some of our collective bargaining agreements, that, some concessions that have been made. And so we're hoping to balance the budget in two years. We predict a $5 million deficit for next year and a balanced budget in 2015. And so one of the benchmarks that I like to provide to the board and the community is how many days of operating capital do we have? And so we've got just on the number of 100 days of operating reserves, and this includes the June 30 collections. And last year, when we looked at this very same chart, we were at 165 days. And so the operational deficit, along with the building projects, has taken us down considerably. It certainly warrants watching further. We've said we'd like to have about 90 days sitting there, and so anything further coming out of our fund balances is going to take us into an area that we've not been for probably the last five or six years.
Assistant Superintendent Grzafie, you know, you and I have played around with the words on this, but I liked your structural deficit, because actually, at the end of the day, our budget has been balanced. So I know we said budget deficit. There are some school districts nearby us that actually have true budget deficits and have to actually go out and borrow that money to balance their budget. We are not in a position where we borrow money to balance our budget. I just want that to be clear. We have a structural deficit, but our budget is balanced.
It's a good distinction. You know, I've often joked, as we have had conversations, that anybody can balance a budget. You know, you go in there with a hatchet and start cutting things out dramatically. And this board, I think collectively, has said, you know, "We've got a decent fund balance that we've built over the years, and, you know, do you reduce services, cut services only to maintain your funding, or do you continue to offer services for the children that are in the district and, you know, use your rainy day fund because it's raining?" And, you know, I've been doing this for 20 years plus, never seen anything as bad as I've seen here in terms of the revenue side of the equation. And so again, those decisions have been discussed in finance committees. They've been discussed over the years, and the idea is that, you know, we're doing the best we can to maintain the level of programming that we've offered. Again, with Dr. Mitchum being our new leader, the new curriculum leaders, we feel it's time, it's time to, you know, put up and continue to, again, provide those services. The one thing I wanted to point out, too, is if we do receive, if the state ever catches up with its quarterly IOU, if you will, you know, we do pick up about seven days of operations. Again, there's that $4.5 million that they, they've actually made good on for the next six days. But again, it's, this situation, I think, does warrant further monitoring. One of the things we looked at during negotiations was what's our low-point balance? And, you know, we talked a lot about maintaining a 30-day balance and low point. And so, you know, that's a precarious situation. For those of you that operate your own households, you've got 30 days of reserves, you know, what does your bank account look like? If you need a new roof, or you need a new cooling plant, a new air conditioner, do you have enough to be able to provide that roof on your home? And that's, we operate in the same way. And so having 30 days on May 30th is about as low as I certainly would recommend we Most of you who are homeowners, property owners, business owners, you pay your property taxes in June and September. Well, that's how we're funded, in June and September. That's when we receive the bulk of our revenue. And you've heard me say this time and again, we get paid in June, we get paid in September, and then October rolls around, and November, and December, and January, and February, and March, and April, and I've gotten not in any new checks. We get a little state funding, but my primary paycheck, and if you were paid in your job twice a year, you got a lot of money in June, you got a lot more money in September, but you better budget accordingly. So when you get to May, and you got to make your car payment, your house payment, you pay your electric, you've still got money in the kitty because your next check doesn't come until June. And that's how we operate. Schools are unique in that way, very different from villages and park districts who receive funding more consistently throughout their fiscal year. This chart, I thought, was important to just provide you a snapshot of what the CPI looks like over the last 10 years. CPI for 2011 is going to be 3 percent. We had a high of 4.1, it's about the highest it's been in 20 years, I think forever, actually, and the lowest it's ever been. So this is the kind of budget uncertainty and fluctuation you can have, and this drives your property tax levy. Levy says you can levy, you know, CPI or 5 percent, whichever's less. So we, you know, we get a 4.1, the following year, we get a 0.1 percent levy increase. Next year, it goes up to 2.7, then down to 1.5, and then 3.0. And so the five-year average is 2.3. And it makes, it makes rather difficult when your primary revenue source is tied to Consumer Price Index. So in closing, the budget includes one-time costs for our additions and renovations, as I mentioned earlier. The collective bargaining agreement concessions are critical to our financial survival. I can't stress that enough. We have been generous, I think, to say the least, in our, in our CBA's, collective bargaining agreements, over the last eight, nine years, and we need, we need some help in that regard because to sustain what's been agreed to, going out is going to make life rather difficult here financially. Reduced state funding continues to be a major stress on our overall finances. Our enrollment fortunately is stagnant. We've not really had any growth. In fact, we see just a very small decline. New property, we were, we were in the neighborhood of $100 million in new property, which was obviously a very nice situation to generate additional property tax revenue. I think this year, the last number I saw was just over $5 million. So to go from five, from $100 million to $5 million in new property is just a major swing in terms of, again, our major, our major revenue source. And as I touched on, operating reserves have declined to 100 days of operations, and that includes the early taxes. And that's something that we've, in the past, we've talked about excluding early taxes. Now we're including early taxes. So, you know, again, it's a much different presentation and a much different set of numbers than four years ago.
So where's the good news?
I wish I had some.
I know, I'm just, have you built in a scenario? Because we know, well, we generally believe that the state's going to do something with the pensions at TRS. If they do that, we believe it won't be activated until you are either out of your CBA or at least another fiscal year, correct? Is that what's being discussed?
I think that would be correct.
And the minimum impact is $1 million to this district per year?
I've seen several different scenarios. You have anywhere between $500 and $700 and $1 million, $700,000 and $1 million.
Depends on how many years they spread it out over.
Correct. Correct. And what assumptions they put in. I just saw an article today where they've, they've added more, $600 million more because the actuaries lowered their assumptions, which increased the required funding by $600 million plus.
Because they don't have as much money, making money, as they thought they had.
And I think they, you know, the false assumption of 8.5 percent return.
No way, not in this market.
That's not happening.
So that makes the state pension debt 1.31, 140, so 131, 143 billion dollars? Something in that neighborhood?
I don't, I don't, I think it was, no, I think it was 8.3 billion was the last number I saw. Isn't that right?
That's just TRS. I'm talking about state and whole, as a whole.
Oh, that I don't know, I'm sorry.
But we're relying on them to give us money for certain programs. They don't have it. I mean, it's just...
And I'm glad you brought that up. I mean, that's something that we have not incorporated into the budget at all. And it probably was worthy of a slide or two minutes.
Well, unfortunately, they didn't take any action in that special session that would maybe force that on us in this budget. At the very least, we'll have, I would assume the state will give us 12 months from the action time to do that, even if they, I don't know. We don't know. It's a, it's a best guess thing. Everybody, four months ago, knew the state was going to take action on pension reform, and then they had a special session, and they, we knew they were going to do something on pension reform, and they haven't done anything. And they're having a veto session in a couple of months, or in a month and a half, and we know they're going to do something on it, but they probably won't. So then there's the new spring session, at which point, they probably will do something. And I would suggest they'll probably do something early in the session, so we may know going into next year's budget what's going to happen, but at this particular time, we're kind of blowing in the wind. So you got to add another $600 million into that equation, is that what you said?
Into the TRS overall, overall liability.
So that number of, that number of a million goes up to 1.3 million or higher?
It could. Even at a million dollars, the difficult concept here is the compounding of that million dollars, because it's a million one year, the next year, it's the million from the prior year, plus the new million, and the third year. So over a three-year period, you think, "Oh, it's $3 million." No, it's $6 million, because it's three, and two, and one, because the money that, from the prior year, doesn't go away. And so in three short years, we're going to add $6 million to that, to that equation that, again, I've got, I can't even cut that. I mean, you know, that's just, that's going to be an obligation that's going to be passed to us. I think there's a better solution. I mean, that's my own opinion. It's not what we're here for, but...
They should call you.
What do you think is a better solution?
You know, as in a new attempt, as a beneficiary of a pension, I think I should be made to pay more, me and everybody else under that system, because the district is not, has no, is not a beneficiary. What does the district get out of, out of the pension? Nothing. Districts are aware that the golden parachutes of the prior contracts are gone. They're being pulled out, they're being removed from those collective bargaining agreements. Nobody's given those large bumps, if you will, anymore. And, you know, we recognize that we've got a problem, and I think school districts around the state are looking to address those. But again, why is the school district being made the heavy here and being made, forced to deal with a million-dollar pushback if that's the number?
Well, and there's a confusion, I think, too, with districts statewide and the way that the General Assembly evaluates your district. If they take your snapshot at the high-level mark, they think you're spelt. If they would be forced, or required, or something, would take a look at your district at its low-water mark, they might consider their pension balancing scheme a little differently.
And the Chicago Public, I think, who pays their own pension is also in, at least if you read the articles, I mean, that's, read the news, I mean, they're saying they're also in a heap of trouble.
We could pontificate over this for hours, but thank you. At this time, are there any questions of the board from Mr. Grzafie's presentation? Now would be a time for the public, if they have any comments, to step forward, state your name, and ask your questions.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Hurdle. I'm a parent in the school district and a property owner, and I have a lot of questions. I apologize. I'm going to do them as quick as I can. Actually, one just came up. But anyway, first, I want to know, and forgive my ignorance, but why are we, are you voting on a budget that starts July 1st of this year, but we're not voting on it till now? I'm not sure I understand what's been happening for two and a half months. Have we lived without a budget, or?
We've operated that way since the dawn of time, really. The requirement that a budget be put in place is September 30th. The earlier you present and adopt a budget, the less you know. The longer you wait, if you will, toward that September 30th date, the better chance you have of having a more predictable budget.
So would it make sense to change the fiscal year, or no? I just don't understand. That makes no sense to me.
I certainly would, would be in favor of something like that, absolutely.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
We don't have that option, but that, that would, I mean, I would love to see it go to a September...
Who does it?
Probably the government accounting...
They tell you it has to be July 1st?
They do.
They do.
Well, fiscal year is July 1st, June 30th. Honestly, I don't even know the answer to that question.
Okay. I'm just curious, because I know, and, you know, if I did that in my, where I am in my organization, we'd never do that. That just doesn't make sense. So, okay. Second of all, and you kind of mentioned this, I didn't see this on the, on all the pages of stuff, on the PDFs, but anyway, I'm just wondering how you can even think about voting on a budget when you don't have a teacher's contract? How can you vote for something? You don't have that. It's my understanding, whatever was presented was voted down, so how can you vote for a budget without probably one of the larger expenditures being in there that I don't, not directing at you, directing at the board? I don't see how you can do that. I wanted to know under, and I apologize, this is for you, Gary. I don't know if this is line items or what it is, but there's something in here that says private tuition. What is that?
That would be the tuition paid to our outside agencies that, that receive our special needs students.
And am I reading it that it's $7 million?
Correct.
Could you give me a little more information on what that means? Special, what does that mean?
We might have, and I don't know the numbers, Erica, you might be able to better. I'm going to say 300 students that receive outside services. 120 and 43 agencies, 43 separate agencies scattered throughout the metropolitan area that we send special needs students who are more equipped, if you will, better equipped to provide services to those students than, than we could do in a, in a cost-effective way.
Are we paying transportation, too, for those?
We would, and much of that would be reimbursed via the state.
Okay. And is that included in the $7 million, or no?
That would not be.
The transportation cost is not, that's just educational cost?
Correct.
Wow. Okay, and then I want...
Let me, some of that tuition also would be reimbursable as well.
Oh, okay. If we get reimbursed?
If we get reimbursed.
I listen to the board music, no. Okay, and this will be a hot thing, and I apologize, but I do want to know, I was concerned to hear about the missed item in the superintendent's package, and so I wanted to know where that payment, that $67,000, did that come out of last year's budget, or is that coming out of this year's budget?
We booked that in last year's budget.
Okay. So that's, it was already, it was already included in the budget, or that means we are over 67?
It was not, but we hadn't closed our books yet, so we were able to book it in last year's budget.
Okay. So if I read right, we have a deficit budget of $20,855,000, something like 20 million?
20 million.
850, yeah. Is that about right? Based on what I saw in the PDF, right? So what was ours last year? Do you know? I apologize, there were so many numbers to look at.
Last year, I think we were at about 8 million. 8 million was the budget.
Okay. 8 million deficit?
Correct.
And this year, we're looking at 20? And we don't have a bargaining agreement yet?
It's actually 26 is what we're showing.
Okay. I have 20, okay. But I'm correct that we don't have a teacher's contract, correct?
That is correct. Let me, based on the tentative agreement that we had, we did layer in the costs associated with that, with that CBA, the collective bargaining agreement, in this budget. Now, if those parameters change, but again, we're just, you know, if we're moving money, it's a net zero. If we're adding money, it's going to obviously affect us negatively, and if there's some givebacks, it would affect us positively.
Right. Right, so the question is, how can you vote on a budget when such a large piece...
If need be, we could come back and amend the budget. If we, if the dollar amount that we've discussed in our negotiation sessions is agreed to, there's your budget. If it is not agreed to, and that number goes up or down, we could come back, if need be, and adjust the budget, and add or subtract a number.
Okay, so if we're already two and a half months into a budget that we don't, haven't approved, right? Why does it, it does not make sense to me to vote on a budget when that huge piece is out, and if we're already running with a budget...
We're required by state statute to present a budget to the state of Illinois, to the Illinois Board of Education by September 30th.
But how can you...
It's not that big of a piece of the budget. We know what our teachers' base salary is currently, right now. So we know what their base is, the only difference is going to be their increase.
Is there what?
So 200 will be the increase. We know how much teachers make now, so we've made an assumption on what that increase will be. You're right, we don't know what that increase will be. But that increase as a percentage of the 274 million-dollar budget is not a gigantic piece wherever that ends up falling.
I, and that's my last one, but I just, I don't understand, as a stakeholder, it makes zero sense to me that you would vote on a budget that is incomplete. And I understand what you're saying, that you have to present it, and, you know, I get that, it just doesn't make sense, but I don't know if that's on this side or the state's side.
We would also have the option to amend the budget at a later date, if necessary.
Well, yeah, and I heard him say that, but again, that doesn't make sense, so, thank you, thanks for answering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Please step forth and state your name, we are in a public hearing.
Good evening, my name is Josephine, and I am the homeowner from 1993. Since that time, my property tax went from 1,700 to 5,500. I just wonder, you know, when I moved to the Bolingbrook, there was nothing, we had only Shell, we had Keymark and the Eagle. Since that time, so many businesses and the homeowners came to the Bolingbrook. Everybody paying taxes. I just wonder where those money are going to? Every time I fight about the taxes, I am told that the school district is, that's the fault of the school district. They tell me I will be able to freeze my tax when I retire, but I'm worried that I won't be able to live in that house anymore, because my taxes are going so high. You know, it's not funny, but you have to face this problem. I can see you have big deficit. Can you tell me how can you afford the raise when you don't have the money? You have to stop treating the homeowners as a cow that's going to give you always the sweet milk. We're just the homeowners who've got family, and we've got lives, too. We've got kids. I can see families who go second job because they're not able to pay those taxes. Those kids are raised on the street. Is this is the generations you wanted to raise for this country? I just don't understand that. Start to think about it, and you have to start to live within your means, you know? We sacrifice, we, everybody sacrificed, but you're going too far. I cannot win any year fighting about my taxes, because every year I am told, this is the school district that requires those money. The tax rate, when our property went, were up, it was 6.8. Now, because the property is going down, it's already 8.6. You know, we cannot fight about it, we have to stop about it. We have the homes in my neighborhood, four years on the market, nobody is buying because of the taxes. You put us in that situation that we are not able to sell our homes. It cannot be like this. We have to, you know, you have to invest in the families. Strong families, it's strong hits, and strong generations for this country. And that's the way it has to be. Our taxes are too high, and somehow you have to face this problem. I don't know, we can read every day in the newspapers, patients' plans, sick days, all these kinds of stuff, it makes you sick. I don't know if this is the same problem in this school district, I don't know, but I just understand, if I don't have it in my budget, I just don't go and don't get it. And you still can afford it the raise? I just don't understand it. If you can explain me this. If this budget tells me that my property tax is going up, I am against that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is the problem that we face, as board members and as taxpayers as well. Also trying to balance services, provide quality education for the kids, live within our means, keep the people who are empty nesters happy, keep the people who have children in school happy, and do all of that under what couldn't be described as anything less than severe fiscal restraint.
I know that often the assessor's office or other offices say it's all us, but I know in my neighborhood that people go, that number the assessor says my house is worth, my house isn't worth that much. And that definitely plays a role in what your taxes are. To be at 5,500, the assessor has said that your house is worth significantly more money than it was when it was 1,700. Now, whether you can sell your house for that price or not, I know I can't sell my house for the price that the assessor says my house is worth. And that's, that plays a significant factor in individuals' property tax bill.
Seeing no other commentators, motion to close the hearing would be in order.
So moved.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote on closing the hearing, please.
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Back to the agenda, which I've lost in my stack of papers here. Here we go. Now, a motion to accept the budget as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion, are any questions of the board as the budget as presented? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Mitchum, information reports from the superintendent's office.
I've got one.
No report.
I've actually got one more action item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over...
Action Report 11.3 is a wide-area network hardware maintenance and replacement contract renewal. We're asking for your approval this evening for a six-month contract to align us with our fiscal year. The amount of the contract is $26,100 with MAPLENet wireless. This is to perform any required maintenance and service on our wireless infrastructure between all buildings within the district. Included in here are six service visits that are actually valid, going to be valid for three years, so we're actually kind of prepaying those, and that was part of the agreement when we, when we first negotiated this installation back about a year, a little over a year ago. So that cost won't be coming back to you in the next, in the next maintenance agreement come June, so we do recommend approval at this time.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
It has been seconded, any discussion? I have one question, what's the term of this contract?
This is just for six months.
Oh, this is six months, okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please, if there's no further questions.
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Now, I skipped over Ms. Cox, but we're back to you now, sorry about that.
Thank you, President Quigley. Tonight, we're seeking your approval on Action Report 12.1, Consolidated Action Report for Certified and Classified Personnel. This report includes 25 items for certified personnel, 26 for classified personnel, and three for certified administrative personnel.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
12.2.
In that consolidated action report, I would just like to make mention that we did make a recommendation to hire an interim assistant director for student services, and that is Teresa Paulson. Teresa, if you'd just like to stay, and we won't make you come up and say anything, but we want to welcome her to this position for the school year. Thank you.
Now, 12.2.
Action Report 12.2, we're seeking your approval this evening on Resolution Number 1327, authorizing dismissal of educational support personnel employee for reasons other than reduction in force. So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Dr. Mitchum, superintendent's report, which I know you don't have one, but I got to ask. Legal Services report?
No report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Alperen. AFT reports?
No report.
Valley View Office Counsel?
No report.
Valley View Counsel?
No report.
Thank you, thank you. Any old business before the board this evening? Any new business before the board this evening? Any questions from the public on actions we have taken this evening? Seeing none. Any announcements by the board on anything?
Yeah, I am.
Mr. Bowles?
If I can find it.
You may.
Wilco Area Career Center is having an open house on the 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, so if you want to know something, a little, if you want to know a little something about what goes on over at the Wilco Career Center, why...
What's the date again?
September 26th.
September 26th, at the Wilco Career Center in Romeoville.
Yes, 6/8. And also...
And if you haven't been out there, it's pretty fascinating, for those of you, general public who haven't seen it.
Yeah, it's pretty fascinating to see what all the kids, what they do offer to the kids. On October the 4th, they're going to have a luncheon at the Wilco Center. The future chefs will be having a luncheon, it's from 11:00 to 12:00, $7 a person, and they would like for you to call for reservations, if you would, it's 815-838-6941. And the kids do a good job of putting on a meal. They've got fancy names for it, but I think you would enjoy it, that's October the 4th, from 11:00 to 12:00.
And that will be on our website, correct, Mr. Anna?
Yep.
If somebody wants further information? He's nodding his head like a dog in the back of a window, yes. Any other announcements by the board?
I would just like to announce, on behalf of the DuPage Regional Office of Education, the College of DuPage, they will be having an African-American and Latino Parent Summit this Saturday, September 29th, at the J. H. Turner Conference Center at the College of DuPage. So if any parents are interested, they can contact Kelly at 630-475-773. Again, that's 630-4075-773. Again, that's the African-American and Latino Parent Summit.
I'd like to thank the Kwan family again, they are tremendous, they are a pillar of Valley View, no question. If you don't know any of the Kwans, you're really missing out, they're a special family that has done a lot in our school district. Also, I'd like to announce, I believe that, I read today, that Bolingbrook High School[1636.54]